All right, any comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move right to announcements in our student representative report.
So we have a few. I'll start again with speech team got first place again in one of their tournaments in Montpelier last weekend. Also last night's, or I think two nights ago, the seventh and eighth grade band had a concert where I believe Mr. Young was featured in.
Oh, I know. Boy, how did you get set up to say that?
I saw it. That's exciting, yeah.
The Chamber Choir will be performing for SB's Rotary Club tomorrow morning. And Chamberlain School received a $500 grant from ExxonMobil to support the school's math and science programs. And they also received a $1,500 grant from Berlin City Auto Group's Drive for Education Grant. And that will be used to purchase books for the upper grades book library.
Any other announcements? All right, we'll move to the next agenda item, city and school collaboration.
So we, I haven't had a more recent one from our, from our last board meeting. I do have one coming up the week that we return, which will be with Kevin Dorn. And then there's another one that will happen on the fourth of January, which is with our demographer, John Stewart, and some city folks specific to the development. So those are upcoming.
Can I just ask where we stand with regard to the design of the building that's, that's going in city center and all that?
So we've had two meetings. In the last meeting, actually Gary joined me, I think that's right, Gary? You were with me. And so that meeting focused on parking, focused on stormwater. And it's, has a little bit of the design, but we haven't really got into seeing their building design yet. So it was mostly centered around, mostly centered around the, as I said, the stormwater mitigation process. So more to follow. We've asked that we need, you know, we have regular scheduled meetings now set up as part of our agreement. And we hope to see a design, a more specific design plan.
Now, the parking, roughly how many spaces are they talking about right now? Because I think a couple of us were surprised at, you know, when, when the, the vote went through, the final presentation on that seemed like it had more spaces on the property that they're, they're taking.
Yeah, so the design currently, we have no net loss in parking. Again, when they were counting some of those other parking, they had some other entry street parking, they had a whole factor in there. And it was, was pretty clear to us that the number that they indicated was actually not what probably will result. So I did indicate that that was felt uncomfortable to us, that they were saying that without having confirmed that number with us, because that was a different number than what we had heard upon our, kind of what I'll say, our planning and progress.
So just to be clear on that, the, the schematic that was presented, the steering committee, is not reflective of any final design yet?
That's right. Yeah. Still in, in process. And we've been pretty clear that we don't want to have any, we can't have any net loss of parking.
Yeah.
And again, part of that is different traffic flow, safety circulation, those are, those are kind of our big buckets of requirements.
Right. And also that the schematics that we had looked at, when we kind of approved everything from the board level, had some buffers and things that were going to allow parking to be clearly delineated between what was available for that building.
That's right.
Okay, as long as, yeah.
And again, we're, we just got a chance to see kind of the first, the first iteration of that.
Yeah, I think, and maybe more specifically, I think that, that schematic that was shown at the steering committee, regardless of the net impact on the Rick Marcott Central School parking spaces, it was the sheer number of spaces on the backside of the municipal building that really would draw a lot more traffic to that area and potentially, if parking was not available. I mean, it, my, my recollection is the original schematic had about eight, and it was primarily handicap parking. And I think there were as many as 20 to, or more spaces in that last design.
I think it would be good that I, I'll bring you back kind of the iteration, this first iteration, we should make that more, I'll make copies. Actually, I can get that out to you, just so you can see it.
That'd be helpful.
This is again, not solidified. And again, Gary and I were there and had some specific comments on crosswalks and where crosswalks would go. And again, there's a fair amount of work that they're doing around that traffic flow circulation and bus circulation. But we want to be clear about, I think, those particular issues that you addressed, Elizabeth and Bridgette.
Thanks. All right, moving on to agenda item six, master planning and visioning.
So we just came out of, when I say we just came out, we just had a meeting today, which was our, our working group meeting. I know, and again, happy to have Bridgette, who's been part of that, Martin, as well. Were with us. And so the purpose of today really was to just continue to bring forward kind of where we are directionally and upcoming meetings, as far as where, where we're at in the process. As you heard before, it was December 11th, we had the principal workshop two, and that was an all-day event. That was the middle school first, followed by the high school. Not only the administrators, but some of the other key, key, you know, key folks in the building to give perspective. And again, with the idea that this information helps the architects to transfer kind of what they're hearing into kind of some, some themes or mapping. And again, that's, that was one of the thing, the outcome. And I was not at the first part of the, the middle school, but I was at the, the second part. And really, it's looking at what, what programs might want to be closer to one another than they are today, and then coming up with really kind of a bubble chart, you know, of a schematic of a building, but looking at how, how those would be arranged. And so that was helpful. And there was a little bit more follow-up again on that today, on, on what they had. The job that the architects have now is to start to pull this together and to begin to make sure that they are hearing what the educational wants and needs are. And so there's still a fair amount of clarifying questions that are needed, but we're wanting to be really clear with them around what we're trying to address, right? And so we've talked a lot more about the ends. We've talked a lot more about the guiding principles and the purpose of why we're doing this. It isn't, isn't, it isn't to get a pretty looking building, it's to improve the, the overall outcome. So there was a fair amount of conversation around our ends and the guiding principles to make sure we're staying focused on that and make sure that as we communicate that out, those are the tenants that we're going to, going to be looking at and using. So I don't know, Bridgette or Martin, if you wanted to add anything else to that, I'd be happy to.
I don't think there's a lot to add at the moment. I mean, really, today was, in my mind, was about setting them on sort of the right path to, to get us the next iteration of their work, which is really, as, as David said, to try to start to tie all these threads together from all the different visioning and the trips and the feedback they've had, both from, you know, our working group, but the community and administration and, and faculty as well, and start to come up with options. And so there are a few different meetings scheduled out pretty far at this stage to, to sort of get those different iterations of those options and, and get them to the working group and then get some more feedback on them from folks who were on the trip, the trips to go visit other schools. And eventually, to sort of push that back to the community and, and, and get more feedback from them as well. So, so yeah, it was just a planning meeting, and there's a lot of work to be done still. So, and we did start to talk about, you know, the fact that there'll be, there'll need to be something in the budget next year for, you know, once we sort of started to coalesce around an option, additional work to flesh out that specific option and see where we go from there will have to happen in the next school year.
Any other questions? All right. We'll move on to agenda item seven, budget planning.
So we're a little ahead of schedule. So what I want to do next is, we've got both Amity, our business manager, and Gary here. Here he is. Yeah. You were up here before. I called him the wrong name earlier, so I'm gonna, yeah, just by mistake, I don't know, it was whatever. I was going around the table at an admin meeting, and I got mic double, I guess, I don't know, Gary. So I know who you are, Gary.
He was a lot younger and better looking, so.
All right, all right. Come on, I'm tired, I guess. So what we want to do is walk you, and again, we recognize that you haven't had anything, you've received nothing to, to date. So you do have a copy of this in front of you. And again, hats off to Amity and Gary, we have gone through, there's a lot going on, there always is during this period of time. But then to, to make sure we get feedback from the administrators, first of all, we get guidance from the board, we get feedback from the administrators on what's going to help us move forward. And then we try to bring, bring that into, you know, kind of our first sharing with you. So tonight, I want to be clear that, you know, board directions, to me, were kind of three buckets. One was a level funded budget, and what would that represent? And we, we know that that was about 28 FTE reductions, or about $1.6 million would have to be reduced from where we are today to make that work. So I have given that charge to the administrators. What would you do if that, again, I kind of divided the FTEs. Again, this was an exercise, but they need to be able to be prepared to do that. That's one. Two, a continuing service budget, and we're going to review that with you here in just a second. And then the next one is really our administrative desired or approved budget. And actually, we'll share that with you in just a minute. I think important, and I know that you all know this, but what we're trying to ensure that this budget represents the quality of service that we want to be able to offer our students, to be able to meet our ends. At the same time, is mindful of the community's ability to afford on an ongoing basis, right? So we're trying to balance those needs. Certainly, the budget that you're going to see has factors in here that we need to consider, and we'll articulate that as we go through it. We do want this to be an interactive process. You brought up one, just a second ago, Bridgette, around when we get to the, the budget, the last part of it, phase three here, we're about including, you know, what we're going to do in master planning. And I don't have money in there right now, I need some guidance on how you want to do that.
Good.
And it was, it was completely up and running.
Because there's some, I'm unsure of how best to go forward with that at the present time.
Lose connection somewhere.
So without further ado, we'll, we'll get to it and turn it over to Gary and Amity to
Yep.
I don't know if David was correcting that issue, or if I was.
do that.
So logistically, what's your preference? We have the capability to project it on the smart board, if you would like us to do that? Okay, David, hold on a second. So it could be on camera?
That's a good idea.
You have to stay in just in that position for the next half an hour.
I think, I think, I think, yeah, it would be good if we can, Gary, get it up on, and
So Amity, do you want to? Okay. Well, I guess I can, I can present it from here.
board members, you know, can also follow along and jot notes as you go, because, you
Do you want me to move over here?
know, I think it's most helpful if we, if you also give us feedback as we go, if that's
Here, I'll just take the chair.
Can you see that?
your, if you can do that.
All right? Camera, can you have that?
I also want to welcome Susie tonight.
Sorry.
Meg and Delina are unavailable, and Susie's filling in, so thank you, Susie.
Sorry, I thought you were going to be up there.
So I assure you that we tested this before, and it worked just fine.
Okay, so we'll, we'll start with our continued services budget, and that is, it pretty, it keeps staffing levels the same, program offerings the same. So to hit the highlights, under the continued services budget, the homestead tax rate would increase by .73% from FY19. The expenditure budget is up 1.699 million from FY19. Our local revenue is lower by $746,154. Net education spending increases by 2.85 million from 19. Our per pupil spending increases by $1,137, which remains below the threshold of, of $18,311 per student. And it includes only the high priority facility stewardship needs. The primary drivers of the increase to the continuing, continued service budget are the increased healthcare costs, about 11.8% for our most commonly utilized plan, salary contingency, and some correction of FY19 budget lines. So how do we compare to prior year's tax rates? We are, we are up in the homestead tax rate to $1.159.09. And in the non-homestead tax rate, we're up to $1.6809. So that, those tax rate will increase residential homestead tax liability by $12 per $100,000 of assessed value. Okay. Amity, do you have a, do you have a full-size presentation there?
I cannot read the smaller one. I did not bring my reading glasses.
Okay, so the, the budget development worksheet, which is a primary driver of, of how our tax rate is calculated, is attached for your review. It highlights the, the things that I had just reviewed with you during the hi, on the highlight slide. So our equalized pupil data, we are, we do not, we have not received the equalized pupil data. We've done some forecasting with a model. It's really not an exact science. We, we believe we will be close to maintaining our current equalized pupil level. It could increase marginally, pretty, pretty small. And the CLA, we have, the best estimate that we have is by working with the city and reviewing some sales data. And we believe that's going to decrease a little bit this year, which obviously will have an inverse impact on the, on the tax rate. But we're estimating for our purposes, for budgeting, at 94% for CLA value.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So it's CLA and equalized pupils are the two items we don't know right now?
Correct.
Correct. And so as Gary said, we're making assumptions, right now, that equalized, the equalized pupil number? So we're saying that that 25-12, and we've simply just used the previous year?
Yeah.
You know, as Gary and Amity have said, you know, we, we know that's probably going to go up a little bit, but it's too early.
And do we, do we have any sensitivity on either the CLA or the pupil, which actually, we could probably do it on the sheet, but if you change by five or 10%?
Yes, this, this, we, we have an active sheet where you can, where you can do that, or the, or you will be able to do that as we move through this. You may say, what if this happens? What will that look like? You can do that.
Thanks.
Well, it, to, to build on that a little bit, so if the equalized pupil number, so 25 is 1%-ish of that, if our equalized pupil number were to go down by 1%, do you have a sense as to what that would do to the?
Tax rate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, is it just, is it a, is it a one-to-one relationship? My, my instinct is that it's not.
I don't believe that, that it is.
Well, it's a factor of this, right? It's, it's the, it's a divisor, so it's, it's our net ed, ed spending divided by our equalized pupil. So, and that's what, that's what then drives you at the net spending, net spending, and divided by here gets you to the tax rate. So those are the, those are the metrics in play.
Okay.
So, and we do have, we can do this, I think, at some point for you to, to see that correlation to, to what happens with the equalize. We've, we've done a little bit of planning with that, we did today. What if we were up, I think, 12 on the equalize, which is kind of what we were thinking? What does that do? And then what if the, the CLA, you know, stays closer to where it is this year? What does that look like?
Because I, and I'm really, you know, hadn't actually reviewed the materials, but I'm having some recollection that we actually had a, a nice upside surprise of like 100 on CLA last year, which was very.
Equalized pupil.
I'm sorry, equalized pupil.
That's right.
So I, I just, you know, wanted to get a sense of what that, that level of surprise might be, and maybe a sense from the, the members as to, you know, what we, I mean, because at the end of the day, I really do think it's that, it's that residential tax rate that's going to greatly influence our chance of getting a bunch, I mean, fair or unfair as it is, I think that's what people are going to be focused on, that's the headline number. And so just some sense as to the sensitivity of the two, you know, the other one being the CLA. But those two numbers that we don't have nailed down, and how, for reasons beyond our control, they might land, and then change the parameters that we're working with. I think before we commit to, you know, I did skip ahead to see what your, you know, proposed budget is, so.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, and we, I mean, we, we can show you that. I can't do that math in my head right here, but.
Nor I.
This spreadsheet right here is, is interactive, you can change it and see the value immediately. So, I mean, even right after the meeting, I can show you that.
And do you have a ETA? Is the, is the AOE, has you given, okay, yeah, I heard the chuckle.
I'll, I'll explain a little bit. So the, the SLDS, the new data collection effort that's gone has really delayed the process of determining equalized pupils. We've been getting a lot of emails from Brad James at the AOE, and not very thinly veiled frustration on his part with the delay in, in calculating equalized pupils. He, he sent us a preliminary number today and immediately sent an email that said, don't use that number.
So that's why, again, we're using that. I mean, some of, some folks may, in our colleagues, may be saying, oh, we've got at least a little bit of a ballpark and use that. We, we don't feel that that's, that's appropriate yet. Sorry, Gary, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, yeah, but I guess, you know, just as not a working estimate, you know, and again, I think the surprise was on the order of 100 last year, so that's like 4%. What does that do to our?
It, 100 does a ton.
Yeah.
But I don't expect any surprise like that this year, I really don't.
Any significant changes in any of our, you know, pre-K program, things like that are all sort of leveling or a little small increase, but with you getting all the equalization factors involved, we don't think it's going to be a large change. And it, we don't predict it to be a decrease, which would be helpful.
Okay, good.
Steve, just, just one thing to point out, the equalized pupils, I think, is based on a two-year average?
Two-year weighted average.
So if we had that big bump last year, it, we're, we're going to still feel it.
You may, again, we're, we're, we're being a little conservative.
Yeah.
And we don't want to jump to conclusions. And I think that what Gary and Amity have put together on, on keeping the same until we have a more definitive is the right way to go about it. But certainly recognizing the volatility of those, those unknowns are important.
But, and then just to conclude that, that part about AOE, so they haven't given you any projections or estimates as to when they'll be able to fill in these last pieces?
They're, they're saying 30 December right now.
30 December, okay, so in time for our next meeting, maybe. Okay.
Yeah. I was a little bit weary about that, because usually the dates come, and then there's a factor of, of, you know, maybe another week or so.
Sure.
And we're very close to having to make some decisions on our budget, so.
Yeah.
And we're not alone, there's, a lot of our colleagues are in the same place.
Can I ask a quick question on a different topic, which is why other revenue is going down?
We'll, we'll get to that.
A bit later, okay. Okay, just want to make sure, okay.
We will, we will get to almost all the values on the, on the sheet right here in the presentation. Overall, you know, before we move on, this represents for the expenditure budget, a 3.42% increase, and a seven tenths of 1% increase in the residential tax rate. Okay, so, and then, you know, this explanation, so we tried to prepare this in, in a way that, that you might be comfortable with, with whatever adjustments you want to present to the public. So I included, Bridgette and I talked about it a little bit, about the tax rate formula in this presentation, just to give you an example of what might be presented by the board to the public. So the, the expenditure budget, I mean, I won't read, read the numbers, minus the local revenue to get the edu, education spending amount, and then divided by equalized pupils to determine our ed spending per equalized people. And then to the next slide, you know, the base rate or the yield used to be the base rate, and then the equalized tax rate to be prorated. So once we get that prorated, we divide that by the, the CLA, which we've estimated at 94% based on home sales. And that generates our actual homestead tax rate, which is estimated for our initial budget estimate at, at 1.5909. A smaller and smaller portion of our, of our taxpayers are paying education taxes based on property. So the income sensitivity explanation is in here with the new 2018 value. Now, this is a little, you know, although there's more of an allowance as far as the maximum income that qualifies you for income sensitivity, but the maximum claim that you can, the maximum you can claim on your property was lowered last year by the legislature, from 500 to 400,000 for incomes up to $90,000, and from 275 to 225 on in family household incomes more than $90,000, between 90 and 147.5.
Do we have an estimate, Gary, in working with the city as to what percentage in our town?
I have no idea, and I don't know if that's releasable information. I mean, I, we can check on that.
We, we know it's been in that ballpark of somewhere from like 60 to 70% have qualified, but remember, it's a sliding scale, as Gary said, not, I mean, not everybody gets the full advantage, it's a slight scale based on their, their income percentage. And last year, that number was what, Gary?
141, 141,000.
So, you know, it's increasing.
Okay, and then the state, the state set tax rate with the CLA, one divided by the CLA, ended up at $1.6809, which is a pretty significant increase, about a little over 5% for our businesses and non-resident taxpayers. Okay, so that, that moves us into our, we broke down the categories of our expenditure budget for an explanation. So we'll, we've highlighted a few items, this is really for, for you to take a look at, you know, after the meeting, or if you have specific questions now. But some of the major items, first on the first page, the vocational increase in the continuing service budget was largely due to an underestimation of FY19 and estimate, and then the estimated FY20 expense. And then we had a co-curricular major increase, because there was really just a trans, an accounting transposition error in the FY19 budget that we had, that Amity actually identified earlier this year. I think you, you were informed of that. So that was a pretty significant increase, with no programmatic increase in co-curricular support. On the next page, the AV services category decreased, which is good news, but the reason for that, there was no required additional equipment or equipment upgrades for the FY20 budget year. Our maintenance and custodial increase is from primarily a utility increase, and the lease for the phone system that's in desperate need of replacement is also in that, that maintenance category, which accounts for a sizable part of that increase. Okay, so that, that moves us into our, we broke down the categories of our expenditure budget for an explanation. So we'll, we've highlighted a few items. This is really for, for you to take a look at, you know, after the meeting or if you have specific questions now. But some of the major items, first on the first page, the vocational increase in the continuing service budget was largely due to an underestimation of FY nineteen and estimate, and then the estimated FY twenty expense. And then we had a co-curricular major increase because there was really just a trans, an accounting transposition error in the FY nineteen budget that we, that AMITI actually identified earlier this year. I think you, you were informed of that. So that was a pretty significant increase with no programmatic increase in co-curricular support. On the next page, the AV services category decreased, which is good news. But the reason for that, there was no required additional equipment or equipment upgrades for the FY twenty budget year. Our maintenance and custodial increase is from primarily a utility increase. And the lease for the phone system that's in desperate need of replacement is also in that, that maintenance category, which accounts for a sizable part of that increase.
Just, you know, the first two lines, really, that's, that's kind of like a...
Regular.
Yeah, it's just salary and benefit roll forward. The eleven-hundred and twelve-hundred lines are, you know, three-point-four-two, four-point-oh-one. It's just basically salaries and healthcare for staff.
Correct.
And that's a million and change of the one-point-six.
It is.
Okay. And is the custodial include, I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm going kind of by the third column, like difference, kind of ignoring percentage, but then the hundred sixty. Is this maintenance and custodial include staff or is that just like supply services? Okay, all right, so that also probably has a component of just roll forward costs. Okay.
We have experienced some staff savings and, as I think I explained before, for FY twenty, we've, we've not replaced one position and we've replaced it with a cost-saving service agreement. Actually, three cost-saving service agreements combining into the work of one, one person.
Okay.
And so we've saved some there. We did bond some of our FY nineteen facilities maintenance work, which kind of, I'm not going to say artificially, but it reduced the cost for FY nineteen, which we're not going to bond every year for that. So, a small portion of that increase is made up because we are going to do some of the work that was bonded, similar work that was bonded in nineteen. And on the final, or the page ten, I'm sorry, I use the page numbers. The security services line includes for FY twenty the, the two additional security personnel that the board authorized for FY nineteen, but was not included in that line item for the FY nineteen budget. And our long-term debt, we did make the first payment from the FY eighteen approved bond issue. On, on page, on page eleven, so for the continuing service budget, you know, in the special revenue category, those are, those are student-driven dollar costs. So those are really service plan-based increases.
If you go back to page ten, so I should, so the, again, the eleven-hundred line on the special revenue fund, so that's a hundred and three thousand dollar. Does that include like an FTE increase in addition to?
Well, yes and no. We'll, we'll get to the breakdown of that, the FTEs and the special, special ed in a couple, few slides.
Okay. Just, yeah, noticing that it's like twenty-seven percent, so seems like more than just a roll forward.
Okay, so we'll move on, move on into the revenue piece. Again, I apologize, realize how small these note slides were. Okay, so the revenue starts on, on page twelve of your, of your handout. And I've, I highlighted in, inside the red blocks of areas of significant revenue reduction compared to FY nineteen. So the tuition from other districts decreased due to FY nineteen announced tuition rate estimation. That's what we have to base our FY twenty budget on. We haven't received that information from the state yet and there could be a light positive change in a positive direction once we get the final announced tuition rate.
Do you mean the average announced?
What's that?
Is it the average announced tuition?
So we have not received the allowable tuition number, which would have been by law, statute said to us by December fifteenth. That's another delay in information from the AOE due to the student SLDS because they collect that data and that's been delayed. So, we don't have our final allowable tuition number. So, we're, our announced number was based on our FY nineteen announced number, which was a little bit lower maybe. So, we feel that probably will come up a little, but at this time, we want to sort of be conservative.
Thank you.
So our special education tuition income, what we're experiencing over the last couple of years is that sending districts are, are outplacing a really, a much larger proportional percentage of their students that require special education, education services. So that estimated revenue from the special ed has decreased pretty significantly from FY nineteen to twenty. The miscellaneous is really kind of tough to explain. I'd love to defer to AMITI on that, but it's really based on our, our historical execution rates and our actuals were, they were under, under-executed. And then the extraordinary reimbursement model, if you look at the pretty significant decrease, that's based on the, on the change in the special education funding model where it took our, our threshold for extraordinary reimbursement from fifty thousand to sixty thousand. So that's, you know, a ten thousand dollar reduction for every student, qualifying student.
In other words, has more than a fifty thousand dollar cost to educate them for the year.
Yeah, so now it's anybody who spends more than sixty thousand dollars individually.
Yep, and there's somewhere around half that much, just forty-five percent down. Okay, thank you.
So the, the, just to clarify, not so much the number, but the expectation with that change in the funding structure is that districts supposedly were going to have more flexibility to deploy these funds toward their total population of students?
Which begins in twenty twenty-one. So, we're doing, they're doing kind of a phase-in of this new act. So by twenty twenty-one, we'll actually receive just block grant funds and we won't have this break out as much. There will be an extraordinary still, but it's, it's an even higher threshold. However, we will have a block grant to give us the flexibility so you don't have such swings perhaps in the, the funding model now that we have, you know, based on a reimbursement of your spending, less your grant funding and a percentage of that, so.
So during this transition period, given the reduction, is there, does it limit the flexibility of the district? I mean, are we, are we trying to sort of put six pounds of services in a five-pound bag?
I don't...
Well, I think, I mean, not speaking for Joanne Goddick per se, but we, we work together to build the service plan, which is what these members are based on. And she, you know, she went into the service plan asking for all the needs that she knew she has and desires of, and you'll see that coming up in another slide, desires of some changing. So, all of that is in here, it just, yeah.
It didn't seem to me like she was overly concerned that it would be, it would be really limiting for this year. One of the things that the legislature did to, to try to offset the extremely high dollars is once you reach the sixty thousand dollar extraordinary reimbursement threshold, the reimbursement rate increased to ninety-five percent. So...
Thanks.
On page thirteen, so, in, in the vocational tuition pass-through, we, we, and we discovered an accounting error from FY nineteen where that, that pass-through, those pass-through dollars were actually included as revenue.
Which already is part of your ed spending formula, so it was a double count of that one fifty.
And then the, the fuel tax refund decrease is based on, you know, historical usage, fuel usage. So lower fuel usage and lower fuel cost than were estimated in the past, both. So, one more, the inter-fund transfer. It's accounted for as a negative expense already and in FY nineteen, it was included as revenue also. So, it was a, an error that we corrected. And then our, our fund balance, which we've, we've talked about quite a bit in some of our monitoring reports. The fund balance was really, really drawn down and reduced from our, our historical levels. Right, historic or historical levels? Historical, I guess. Due to the healthcare recapture program that this, the state initiated. And we'll talk about that a little more here coming up shortly. So, bottom line, bottom line for our revenues were, they're down almost three-quarters of a million dollars for FY twenty. We think that we have been sufficiently conservative that that won't get worse for actuals. It may, may in fact get marginally better. Okay, so moving on, in our continued services budget, just giving you a recap for your review of enrollment data for FY nineteen. They're on pages fifteen through seventeen. And then our projected enrollments for FY twenty. FY nineteen is based on actual data and FY twenty is based on a combination of the McGivern, McGivern report and the actual data that, that we're reviewing to project next year.
It seems like for most of the grades at elementary level, it looks like we're just sort of making an assumption that the cohort stays about the same size, except for first grade. Was that just an aberration in the McGivern, McGivern data or? Because it goes from one sixty-one down to one fifty-six. It just looks like that cohort's shrinking for some reason.
So you're saying it's...
So if I'm just, like, so for example, kindergarten FY nineteen is at one seventy-five and we're assuming that that becomes one hundred and seventy-six first graders. But the first grade goes from one sixty-one down to one fifty-six.
Yeah, so this is...
Just trying to understand.
So, we have our own, our own internal model, but, I mean, for the most part, we haven't changed that cohort. We have our own internal model of over the years, we've looked at kind of what happens with some migration of students. I think honestly, we could keep them exactly the same for transparency purposes because the only thing we're doing right now is we're using the McGivern data for kindergarten and essentially all of our data on just the migration of students moving. Until we get something more concrete from McGivern, which we're hopeful to get before we, before we have to adopt a budget, we'd like to get that more formalized.
That one fifty-six, just to clarify, was based on actual data as of December fourteenth.
So, so we've lost some students from that grade already this year? So we've lost five students?
That's, that's what the Jon Stewart and Ray Mann's review of the, of the actual data portrayed.
So that's what we transferred over.
Okay.
Again, we're, the hard part here is we're anticipating, you know, kindergarten numbers that are probably, you know, could be slightly higher than what we might actually get in, but we think that's also the right way to go about it from, you know, the methodology, you know.
Can I just stop and ask David for a moment? We have average grade size or class size of twenty-one point three in fourth grade projected. And that bumps up against our policy class size limits. So, you know, we, we could go with this continued service budget, but then we'd immediately have to do something, you know, either sending the contingency teachers to the fourth grade or whatever would be recommended.
No, I, I think it's, it's the cohort group average that you would, these are actual classes. And then you've got grade band averages, I think, in your policy, if I read it correctly.
The policy is a grade band average?
It's a whole grand band, whole grade band average. And although we try to be sensitive to the whole class average, this is, this is rolling up the total number, you know.
And I think it's twenty-five, isn't it? At the high end, for fourth and fifth grade. It's different from K through three than it is.
Been thinking of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we, we do have other of our enrollment data sheets that you'll see, again, that has the actual policy. You know, you've seen that sheet, very small to see on the screen, but we've had that before.
Yep.
Make sure you have it as well.
Okay, and I'll just ask, I mean, it's funny, I probably shouldn't have seen these tables a hundred times, but are there, are there any sort of video synchroncies that get introduced when you have just a cohort group that's like thirty or forty students, smaller or larger than the prior years? Is it just a simple matter of shifting teachers around or, I mean?
It would, it's hard when, when we have three different, you know, three, three buildings.
Right, right.
So that's the hard part, that, you know, the dividing, you know, if you've got, you know, thirty students, you know, it's too big for one and you're kind of getting on the, on the small side for two. I mean, that's just a rough, you know, at the fifteen. We have one class at, at Chamberlain that's at twenty-seven, you know, so again, too big for one. And, you know, it's on the small side for, for two. We, we, we do think that, you know, we have the right of assignment and we do feel that if there's places where we can move, and we'll talk more about this as we move forward, you know, we have, we can move a teacher. So, we've done that before, but you've also had contingencies in front of you before as well.
Maybe just foreshadowing, like, the eighth grade cohort here is up by like thirty-seven students year over year and then the seniors are, I don't understand that, like, how do you go from under two hundred to two hundred sixty-five? You know, under two hundred this year to two hundred sixty-five, just, just an anomaly, it just happened to be that way?
Well, we do have bubbles that come through. I mean, typically, we don't see that variation that big, but, you know, in some cases, you know, again, the demographer would be far better to explain the rationale and reasons for, for that.
No, but that, that class has been big all along. We've talked about it.
Okay, you've watched this.
We've had to add sections of required classes for that specific grade as they've moved through freshman, sophomore and now junior year. So, yeah, it is an abnormally big cohort.
Large employer was hiring that year or something.
So, moving on to the, to the middle school, sorry. Back one, AMITI.
Just previous, Pete.
You should be able to use the back arrow. There you go. Okay. So, the, the middle school, we are, we're projecting going from five, five sixty-eight total to five fifty-seven for next year. And that's inclusive of, of the tuition, tuition student estimate, which we believe we're a little bit conservative on. We think that's probably around the minimum number of tuition students that, that we will get, but we didn't want to, with our, with some of the past practices, we didn't want to overestimate on the revenue side. Questions on the middle school? And moving in to the, to the high school, we do have, we have that fairly large kind of bubble class going to be seniors and it's inclusive of eight outplaced tuition students at the, at the high school. And we, I am not, to be honest, sure exactly if every one of them is a senior, but we put them into that senior bucket for, just for planning purposes. Okay, so moving right along to page eighteen and nineteen for our staff summary. Probably starting at, at page nineteen, bottom line is a... Probably starting at, at page nineteen, bottom line is a, is a good place to start. What's that?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah. And so we're, from our adopted budget to our actual nineteen budget, we're 1.85 FTE under at four ninety point three six. So that would-
I'm confused, it's on the elementary page.
Oh yeah, so, just gonna say, we want to talk about, are you gonna talk about the special education? And so those numbers all look, the elementary summary looks quite different now per the state changing of the uniform chart of accounts and the way they are collecting data. They do special education, ELL services and ITE services at a district level. So we move the FTEs from the school to the district level. No change in FTE assignments probably aren't going to change either, except if special ed has, you know, needs, but that's very normal. It's just bringing those positions into the district-wide level. So you're gonna see that same change in dollars as well. You know, where the local school had the teachers charged and the paraeducators and the EL teachers charged to their local school level, it's now reported at the district level.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I probably should have led with that. I was pretty eager to get to that we were 1.85. So that's the final piece of the continued service budget.
I escaped by accident and then I think I got out of the presentation, so I'm not even sure if I'm in the right one. If you were telling me a page number that I have different, I'd just make sure I have the right presentation, sorry.
That's okay. So while they're doing that, the board had talked, we had talked about kind of those three buckets and we had kind of talked about a desired budget. So I don't want to confuse you. What we're gonna talk about next is the proposed, the, what it says here is the administration's proposed budget. And that's what we chose to call it instead of the desired budget. We just chose the administration's proposed budget. I hope that doesn't confuse you, but again, I struggled with that a little bit when I was introducing the three, the three areas.
And could, while they're working on, can you talk a little bit about where you are in the process on the proposed budget? Just how really formulated it is? Because I know it goes through some iterative process and just what, what the status is basically of the budget.
So, as I said earlier, central office has met with all of the administration as well as the central office also has direct reports, HR, business office, et cetera, around what those are as well. So this budget, this administration's proposed budget pulls all of that in. I would say that we haven't had a lot of time to really discern. And so, what I mean by that is to look at the correlation of all of, what I would say the priorities of all of those things. So we've heard from administrators, we've asked the hard questions on around what are, what's needed to advance their particular school or elementary level. And then we've tried to, we've had these meetings all together too. So we've really tried to make sure that we're working collaboratively around what we need. The good news is that's happening, but as one request may be here, we have to discern whether or not that's something we're gonna, we're gonna put in there. So this, this will reflect our out-of-the-gate share with you and we'll be looking for some feedback from you, or I will be, to me, around where we go next, all right? So I'll turn it back over to Gary and Amity for sharing this.
Okay. So if you look at what, at our proposed budget, the administration's proposed budget, and we've got a slide on what this budget provides that the continued services budget does not provide. First, it's a 2.3% increase from our continued services budget. It provides a program contingency of $250,000. So we have a capital, a capital reserve fund of $300,000 that is earmarked and only usable for capital needs for. With our work with the Citizens Budget Advisory Group, they're strongly recommending, because we are, because of where we are in fund balance, that we continue, that we consider a program contingency that is not only available for capital projects. And they, Amity, you can clarify, but I think this number came from what their recommendation was.
Right. I mean, they saw the significant drop in our fund balance because of the unanticipated clawback or help recapture that was enacted by the AOE. And they said, you know, you have a $50 million budget and you don't have any wiggle area and so you might want to consider. So we asked David and he said, go ahead and put it in and we'll discuss, we'll discuss that. But it does kind of make sense in the fact that it's a half a percent, but it does give us a little bit of, in the off chance something does come up that we don't necessarily have planned and if it isn't spent, that does help us for future years as well.
And so that contingency represents half of, 0.51 of the 2.3% increase from the continued service budget. The biggest item is the addition of the triple E program at Rick Marcott Central, which accounted for nine tenths of one percent of that increase.
Explain what that program is.
I think David would be a lot better. I know what, I know what it is, but-
So we currently, we have preschool partners out in the field. We have programs that currently run at, at Orchard and Chamberlain. We do not have one at Rick Marcott. And we do service individuals that are early essential education is what the triple E stands for. But Joanne has, deploys a lot of resources outward and feels that it would be most effective and appropriate for us to have a triple E program. Again, these are not just students that are identified triple E, but also model students. And again, feels that it's an absolutely critical part of the support needed for the students that we're seeing in the field. Remember, we, we have about 430 pre-K students. Pre-K students count as a 0.42 on the equalized. So general ballpark, that's about 200 equalized. So we get, we get revenue for them, but we also need to provide them with services. And we do pay out to some of the providers as well. So this is a, this is a keep in-house, we won't have the same amount of paying out. So there's a cost, I don't want to say cost neutral, there's a cost shift here, which we could give you a little bit more on. And I think it would probably be good for Joanne maybe to give you a little bit more specific insight around some of the, a little bit more on the rationale around, around that move.
Does that mean that they're taking, having a class within the central school?
That's correct.
For, for pre-K?
Students would, students would come in, there'd be model students. We would serve them in our school as opposed to having to pay others to, to serve them. And part of that is our ability to do so in, in a way that we think is, is most appropriate and needed.
What do you mean by model student?
Students that have, that are not, not identified in, in any special way. You just don't want to have a classroom of students that are all early essential education. You want to have a mix of students that are helpful role models, if you will, to make sure that-
Yeah, I-
Called peer.
Yeah, so the peers, yeah, so they're peer, yeah, it's, yeah, it's sort of a peer model. And it's been running at Orchard. But my understanding though is that at Orchard and Chamberlain, so kids within our district might start then pre-K at Orchard, for example, and then move to kindergarten at Rick Marcott and it's sort of a transition for them.
It's not, it's not easy. So part of that is, we have not been able to in the past to have, you know, we've been restricted on some space issues. So again, we have to be, be sensitive to that. But currently, we feel like this, this could work for at least this period of time. We have to, again, be watchful of, of those enrollments. But again, it's, it's where we can serve them the best. And as I said earlier, we currently, if we're not doing it and we, we pay out some of those services, we have to pay providers and, and that support, so again-
So classroom is opened up space-wise and moving there.
And how many, about how many students does this look like it will sort of?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. And again, I think that we'll put a, we'll put a mark for Joanne to come back and share with you a little bit more since this is a big chunk, as Gary said, of the, of this proposed budget.
It's about what, 450,000, 460,000, something like that? What are we, what are we buying? Is that largely people or is that?
It is, it's mostly staffing. There's, I think-
Five additional staff, a teacher and a speech and language pathologist at that level and then also two interventionists and a paraeducator for that.
So these are kind of structural ongoing costs then?
Yeah, and again, the cost benefit analysis would be probably helpful for you to see because you're seeing, I mean, this is an FTE, but if you see on the other side what we're, what we're putting out or needing to provide, it's also-
I guess that other thing, is this a gross cost or is this, is this netting out then what we are gonna need to outsource?
This is the gross cost.
Gross cost.
Okay.
We, you aren't seeing the net. We can give you a little more information on what we would net.
I did a calculation quickly on the amount we pay out for a pre-K student is 3,386.
Three, three, five, six.
Three, three, five, six. For 2020. So there's, tends to be, at least following the model of central, sorry, Chamberlain and Orchard, there's about 20 peer students. So we assume that the outplacing kids that we pay for now would be in-house. So we wouldn't pay the tuition to those providers, those pre-K providers. So that would save us in an expense line of about $50,000. I did calculate that. But that's not a lot when you're looking at the 450, but it is a savings of not paying a provider for pre-K services because we would provide that as peer students in the pre-K model, or in the triple E pre-K.
This maybe is going in the wrong direction, but it's like, well, what about replacing the two triple E programs at Orchard and Chamberlain with an outsourced service for a lot less? Or is that, or do you just think the outcomes are-
Joanne will tell you more specifically around what are those tangible costs and what are the outcomes and services that we're trying to address. That's, that's a big part of, of the rationale as well. And I, I'd like to make sure that she has the opportunity to come to you. We probably can get something out to you, you know, through email and then also present it the next time as well.
Okay, we had a small increase in the library media technician at Chamberlain was at 0.29, I think. Upgrading to the sound systems at the elementary schools has been, it's been planned and is necessary, has been for a little while. We have one FTE addition of a HR benefits position and some funding for digitizing district records in preparation for the potential move of the, of the central office team. We are asked for one, this is one of my favorite budget items, request on here is in addition of one FTE to the Office of Operations and Finance for a clerical accounting and assistant position. And then, again, the three FTE security officers to support one at each middle school.
Elementary.
I mean, I'm, one at each elementary school, sorry, was a, a big piece. And finally, the, to round it out, we have, in our lifecycle replacement plan, we've reduced that for the past couple of years. And in working with Scott, we really do need three buses as part of our stewardship lifecycle replacement plan this year.
That's just the annual cost of the lease.
Right.
So like five, five-year leases or?
Lease cost, yeah, five-year leases.
And the lease is different though, right? We, we pay on the lease, the first two. And how does, how does the lease go on the buses? It's a little bit different than a normal lease program, right?
No.
No.
Within the payment and then how we own it in the end.
It's an operating lease, so it's the five-year lease, but at the end of the lease, you own the vehicle. It's a buyback option.
Our typical lifecycle is ten, hitting about 10 years.
So you pay for it for five and then operate it for another five.
Yeah.
How much is a bus?
Could be 90 for a-
Okay, I was getting, yeah, it's like, wow. For a big yellow piece of metal.
Are we thinking about getting one of these electric buses?
We are, we're working, we're working with the Volkswagen-
Yeah, the settlement.
The Volkswagen settlement, it's not been finalized yet. But we are on the list to be an early applicant. There's about 18 and a half million dollars coming to Vermont. And we are, we are exploring that.
Good. I mean, it doesn't pay for the whole, but my understanding is it pays for the extra that it would cost to get an electric bus.
It pays for the, the cost over and above a comparable diesel-powered bus. Plus, it's going to purportedly provide grant funding for the purchase and installation of a charger. Okay, so the highlights of our, the administration proposed budget. So its tax rate is 3.61% higher, 2.8 million higher than FY '19 from an expenditure standpoint. Local revenues don't change, net education spending is up 4 million. Education per pupil is up 159270 and it's still well below the state threshold. Again, it doesn't change anything to our stewardship plan. We are, we are sticking with doing only what we have assessed as required from a facilities maintenance standpoint until we get the results, final results of master planning and visioning work.
And it includes nothing for master planning and visioning yet for next year?
Nothing. So residential, the homestead tax rate goes up to 163, 63. And it increases per $100,000 of property assessment, $57 on the, on the residential homestead rate. Again, this next slide is the, is the same, same slide that we reviewed in the continued services, just with different numbers and-
Can I ask why there's not an incremental impact on the non-homestead rate?
That's set by the legislature.
Oh, okay, got it. Thanks.
So that's only affected by CLA. So again, the 3.61, if you see, and, and from an expenditure standpoint, it's 5.72% increase. And then, yeah, just transferred the property tax formula with the proposed budget information. And if we go to page 27, we've done the same breakdown by budget category for the proposed budget. And the items that are highlighted in red, they, they correspond with the initial slide that tells us what we get over and above the continued service budget. So wait, let me make sure I said, so the 4.74% is in addition to the 3 point whatever percent or is that the?
No.
That's the total.
No, that's the total.
Okay, thank you.
It's just working the same.
Are you as anxious to jump to the staffing summary as you were on the first one?
I'm not.
You seem to be hesitating.
We could end the meeting first.
We're in the pause mode right now, can you tell?
I hesitate, I sense some hesitation there.
I was giving you plenty of time to review this. Okay, so if we go over to the final portion of the presentation and that's the, the staff summary, I will refer you because we've already talked about the change in special educators to the district and triple E to the district. So we will have you jump right to page 32. And based on administration's identified needs, the FTE change from both the current FY '19 and the proposed FY '20 and then the adopted FY '19 and the proposed FY '20, staffing levels are, are highlighted at the bottom.
So how much of that is for the EE, EEE and for additional special education?
It was five for the triple E.
Five.
And three security.
And three security. And then the just tiny piecemeal, little other FTEs and other places.
But so, so we've got.
Office of Operations and Finance.
And HR.
So there is, and Amity really has been working this, so I'm going to let her like try to explain off the top of her head because there are some changes proposed in special ed that affect FTE.
So in addition to, um, the, the full addi- adding of that triple E, uh, Joanne has a model of the addition of five special educators that are spread across the three elementary to bring each of them to a sixth special education.
One per grade level.
One per grade. Um, and then that sixth is a, um, and I think that's an int- uh, oh, I can't think of the word.
Intervention?
It's not an interventionist, it's an intensive needs teacher, I'm sorry. So each school has an intensive needs teacher plus then the five for each grade, I believe is how that works.
But the increase is only five FTE in the program.
The increase is the five teacher FTE, but there's a reduction of nine para educators. So there's actually a net, you know, reduction in that number.
Is this from, I've worked with the trauma-informed teaching and the. Right. I mean, it's a variety of things around, around how we respond, uh, and can care for students in the most effective way. Again, I don't want to say that we haven't been doing a good job, but as we continue to learn, how do we deploy resources? This is again, part of, uh, the DMG report, which has been heavily studied. This is a, a study that was done, um, and Joanne's work around trying to make sure that we have the most skilled individuals. Again, I don't want to say that our support staff aren't skilled, but the most skilled individuals with our students and are doing a more of a co-teaching model. Um, so that's the movement. We've, we've moved in some of our schools that way, but this is also moving to the elementary level as well to help that. So, um, it doesn't mean that we won't continue to have some support folks, but this is again, uh, making a reduction there for that. Yeah. So again, that throws a little bit of some complexity into this particular following of the FTE chart.
And our most important slide is, uh, the final slide?
Right.
So that.
So, yeah.
We're open to questions. We, uh, we tried, um, we made an assessment of what you have been getting for information in the past and we tried to, uh, make this a management level briefing. We have, um, more detailed information that, you know, you're welcome to take a look at with us offline or, you know, at your request, um, that we can provide. But I think, um, trying to make it communicable to the public for you and, uh, a little bit more of a management level kind of a presentation for your initial one. So we're, I'm definitely open to feedback on.
So before we, again, I want to not, we have not forgot master planning and visioning. We've done a phase one, we've done a phase two and we want to be clear that it's not to drop off. You know, that, that there's going to, if we, if we move in any direction, we got to have some resources to, to ready ourselves for that next step. Uh, there's two schools of thought here, I think, and, um, one is to put some money into the budget now for the July one timeframe. The other is, is that you go forward with the continued work, although we got to have some of that work get done in order to prep for, uh, you know, anything that you might want to be considering in a more drawn-out way, right? Schematics and design ideas that you can then put cost estimates to, to do that. So we don't have any money in this budget to do that work. Initially, I thought somewhere in the two fifty to five hundred thousand. And then we, you know, we've also thought about, could we plus up, you know, um, the contingency to, to have some of that buffer there as well? And again, we're, at this point, I'm not included in and opened it up for a conversation. The other part is, you know, that we have, we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on kind of the conversations that we've had with citizen budget, as Gary said, our, our, um, fund balance situation, so we've included that in there. But at the same time, I'm sensitive to where we are with our overall percent expenditure. And so I think it's important that we take pause right now from, and listen to you on what you'd like to do. We have sought a little bit of guidance around the, the movement forward on the architectural way and I think one school of thought is you're going to bond for, if you do bond, then some of that would be included in, in the work that you're going to do. I'm not quite certain that I understand how that could happen because in order to get to the bond, you got to get the work done to have appropriate cost estimation, so we're not, we're not there yet. So, um, again, I, I want to, we've, there's a lot going on and Amity and Gary, um, have done a lot of work to get us to here and, um, so I want to thank them for this. We have, we have still a lot more work to do. Administrators, we've met with this morning and will be meeting again tomorrow morning, but they also have been helpful and it's been really important for me to make sure that they're all informed before we're presenting to the public, before, you know, we're sharing things that, because there's a fair amount of things that aren't included in this and that was administrative judgment on my part to say, uh, I'm not doing that. Uh, I can't right now, right? And again, this is a little bit about how I opened up last time around education budgeting is never really a transformational event. You're seeing that, that we don't have our data points. It's really hard for us, for me to present you to a budget and a community that doesn't really have the knowledge of what your tax rate might be. And we're worried that we might not get it until mid-January. Um, so it's really, really difficult to do much of anything, um, beyond kind of a continued type service budget. Uh, and we're, we're trying to do some things here, but it's, it's, it's extremely difficult. So anyway, let us listen to you, your thoughts, ideas, so we can go forward and prepare to come back with, to you with, uh, a couple more iterations of this.
I feel like I've done a lot of the talking, but I have some thoughts about framework, but I'd really like to get the rest of the board sense, so. Just, I think a metric that I picked up going over this is that about each percent of the homestead tax rate is about four hundred thousand dollars, give or take. And so your, and a desired budget is three point six and.
Three point four.
Three point six one or something like that. That's the, again, the, the homestead tax rate.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Which I think is really going to be the headline number that people are looking at. Um, I, and my sense is that that probably is a, you know, really, I mean, and I don't sense that there's any big upswell of, of disapproval associated with that, but that if it began with a number two, it would probably be a little better. So, you know, that's find, you know, another two or three hundred thousand to, to come out of that. But then you've also indicated that, you know, it'd be really nice if, if there were maybe another half a million for master planning and visioning. And so I guess my question is, if you had to go back to your, your, your current service budget and find about another eight hundred thousand that would both kind of get the overall homestead rate down below three and find you that half a million for master planning and visioning, how big of a lift is that? I mean, it sounds like a pretty big, no, eight hundred thousand, that's, you know, probably ten, twelve, fifteen FTEs, you know, if you just wanted to go to the personnel line. But are there ways, because, you know, just looking at the, at the fund lines and Gary, I, I suspect on the detail that you provided, starting on page eight. You indicated that you did some changes, some efficiencies that actually yielded some benefits in the, in the maintenance area, but, you know, I mean, we do this at the state colleges all the time. We don't have any money. So if we want to make an investment, we got to go find somewhere not to spend money. And so if you both, you know, and also understanding that we still have two, two numbers that have to land, which could completely change the equation. If they land great, you're going to have a two-handled, uh, homestead tax rate and you might be able to find that half a million, uh, and, you know, all of our problems are solved. I think we probably still do need to keep an eye on how much we're actually spending year over year. It's that five point seven, five point seven-two number at the top of the graph on page, um, page twenty-four.
Well, the other thing is that what's on the, what's on the ballot is the increase in the cost per equalized pupil.
Mm-hmm. Is that, okay, I'm sorry, I'm.
And. That's required on the ballot and that, because that's double digits, that, that, that was a little bit of a sticker shot.
Okay, actually, no, let's, let's focus on that.
Number, it's, it's ten point seven-five.
Yep.
Right now.
All right.
Yeah, you understand what the drivers are with that?
I do. No, I understand how we get to it. I'm just saying, if we're talking about like what that looks like, because we don't vote, when we go to the voting booth, I mean, we talk a lot, but we assume the, or we estimate the homestead tax rate is going to be in these meetings and it's generally one of our guides. But what people actually see on the ballot when they go, the ballot language is.
Can you recite that? Because I, I do remember, actually, there is statutory language. Is that the only percentage change?
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, boy. All right.
Right.
All right, we'll reverse everything that I just.
No, 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 no. I still think it's still, I still think it's right to focus on, on tax rate as well, but we, until, we, again, it's always an estimate because we don't know until the legislative session is over what the final tax rate will be anyway, and that's well after we've all voted on it. So this is an estimate always.
I think our, our most talked about, you know, two, uh, metrics have been always our overall expenditure percentage and our tax rate percentage. Those are the ones that we, I mean, from my perspective over the years, we've talked about the most. Uh, and then certainly we talk about the impact on, on the average condo, average home, but those have been, those have been the big drivers and in some cases, we've had low expenditure budget, but that tax rate has been, percentage has been up.
Right.
But again, the, the factors that have been revealed tonight, particularly revenue hurts us, a flat, the revenue hurts us on that driver and our, our equalize at the moment. And obviously our overall expenditure are the big drivers on that.
Well, the five point seven-two number is completely in your control, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so the five point seven-two percent, so maybe that's what we should focus on.
That's right.
And how it boils down to the residential tax rate, but, you know, if we had a number that was on the order of eight hundred, is that a, I mean, I'm trying to remember what the numbers were at the two passes of the budget we did two years ago.
I think we started with a seven percent increase at that top line, uh, in that first budget that.
An absolute dollars, what was the, what were the two, two cuts that we made?
Yeah.
We got it down to like four point nine on the one that passed.
But the, the each, you know, it's like the first cut was a couple hundred thousand and the next one was, I can't remember what the two combined were, was it like a million or?
The two of them together made about a million.
Was it? Okay, yeah, I just, it's a passage of time.
Remember, I mean, there are likely going to be changes. We've been conservative in our application of CLA equalized. We're, we're going to get likely more refined data. And again, I think what's important for us is to, for us to know, I mean, a little bit on the overall, so the overall expenditure target and overall tax rate target, I mean, and get me some.
Well, my concern is really FTEs. I mean, because, uh, the, the increase in the budget, not very much of this is one-time stuff, you know, this is, this is a pretty decent increase in FTEs and.
Structural.
And you're increasing, um, you're replacing lower-paid FTEs at the para level with higher-paid teachers, which we kind of have to do, you know, because that's, that's what we're being instructed to do. But, but it is a little bit concerning that we're, we're adding a decent chunk of FTEs and that'll be an ongoing cost. So it would be really helpful to hear because a lot of that's related to special education. It would be really helpful to hear from Joanne again about exactly what those needs are and why. And, and as, as Steve was saying earlier, you know, why it makes sense to add a third location for that triple E program, why there isn't, you know, uh, would it be more efficient to continue to contract out, you know, for some of those as opposed to adding FTEs that are going to be in there on an ongoing basis? Or is there space at the other two programs that we have right now to increase it without increasing quite as many FTEs, you know, to start a completely new?
There's no space at the other locations.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's good to know, but.
It's, again, your questions are fair and, um, I, I guess I'd rather to allow Joanne to go into the, you know, a, a more, you know, deeper explanation on, on the rationale. This is not, this has been before me, three years now, you know, to try and move this and I've been, I've been, I've said no and it's, it's, it's reached a pretty significant level for her advocacy in this area. So I'll let her talk a little bit more with us on that.
As a matter of principle, I mean, I, I don't like the concept that Mark Hott doesn't have something that Orchard and Chamberlain do, but at the same time, I actually, you know, unless, unless it's a really uninformed type of question, it's like, okay, if it's that much less expensive to just outsource it, why do we have such expensive?
Her explanation will help, I think, give you a better understanding of what, what, what the rationale is and I think, again, it, it is, it's FTE. We've got security, safety officers that are, that are, that are three additions in there.
People don't understand that.
But, you know, I don't, I mean, this is a little bit, and I've, um, I hear Elizabeth, she and I have been together a long time in this, but I can hear her saying, you know, is this our work, right? I mean, the, this is, we're taking on work that, is, is it really school-related expectations and, uh, you know, I can want to say no. And on the other side, it's like, these are kind of some have-tos that, you know, I wish I didn't have to be talking about that at all, but, you know, we've had to do some things with modifying our schools to make them a little bit more, um, appropriate and, and safe and we've had to add some staff to do that.
I mean, well, just to build on Bridgette's question a little bit though, I mean, if you had to do an exercise of, you know, trying to fund investments that I think we should be making by redirecting existing resources with a specific focus on FTEs, you know, how, how big of a lift is that or what are some of the impediments to doing that? And are they largely cultural and, you know, concern about morale and things as opposed to, yeah, we really could actually, if we were running efficiently, we could pair some of these, these numbers, so.
It's important for me to, for us to listen. I, I, so I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying. I want to, I want us to listen and be able to.
And it's not just directed at the triple E program though. I mean, that is, that is saying, it's like we're taking five hundred bodies and we are basically saying, and all of them are doing just fine. And, you know, it's a little hard. I mean, again, it, it's a little gimlet-eyed to say that, but, you know, that is kind of making a, a relatively benign appraisal as, as compared to, you know, an organization that would be, you know, in a position of really having to find savings, so.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions from the public?
I'm not going to trump Joanne, um, but the DMG report and the especially block fund grants, uh, the triple E pieces, not solely, but that does weigh. So investment in early education, reduce costs over time. So the savings you get is because students who have really high quality special education services early are much less likely to be exhibiting really high expenditure needs later. And that's part of the DMG report as well as the idea about the level of staffing paid. So that's, that's all baked into that new block grant funding model. That's the, so the savings you don't get it in the first year, you get it when that kid is seeing me in the high school.
Or not seeing.
So I liked that one. Or not seeing. Um, I just thought I'd just throw that out there.
No, thank you, Mr. Everett. Thank you.
No worries. Joanne will do it better.
Following up on what no one suggests, i- if we have any information on what cost savings we may be seeing from the triple E programs we've had at, uh, Chamberlain and Orchard. I don't know how long those programs have been in place, but we have noticed any difference, uh, in those longer-term costs. Now, if Joanne can weigh in on that.
Yeah.
All right. All right, thanks, Gary. Thanks, Amity. And David? All right, we will move on to agenda item eight, negotiations update. Um, I'll give a quick update on the, um, SBEA. Uh, we have, we met twice or once since our last meeting?
I can't remember which dates we've had.
Twice.
We have met on, yeah, we have met twice, uh, since our last meeting. Um, and you want to give an update on support staff?
Uh, support staff, we had our first meeting with them on, uh, Monday nights and then we have two more scheduled in January, so we kind of got moving on that one. Uh, and Martin, I don't know that we updated the public, yeah, just the subcommittee on that one is, is Martin and myself, just because of, really because of scheduling, uh, challenges. So, um, Monday night works best for the support staff and that worked better, uh, to have that be the team, so.
Yeah, and, and also with the SBA, we have three meetings on the calendar, uh, through the beginning of February. All right, uh, executive limitations policy monitoring two point oh.
So this came before you, I think, just briefly. I had a little bit of feedback about the inclusion of, in evidence, which I think I've now captured or attempted to capture on page, I think it's on the last page, five of five.
Page four and.
Four and five, yep, which starts about some of the components specific to the healthcare as what I'm saying, some of the evidence of, I think, that, although we didn't, I don't want to say, you reviewed it a lot, but that was one of the components that I think was a reflection that you felt that was appropriate, or that I should have maybe had as evidence.
I thought that was helpful.
Martin?
I do think a little, I mean, when I wrote my interpretation, I did it in number order, one, two, three, four. I think that does create a little bit of confusion because, you know, the evidence, I number the evidence, but it doesn't necessarily correlate to, you know, one doesn't go with one, right? It's just my evidence spread.
Just because, you know, you're reporting compliance, it doesn't mean that Data Path is doing a, doing what they're supposed to or what we expected.
Yeah, this, if the board doesn't have any objection, can we not take action on this tonight and review it one more time?
Fine with me. Yeah, that's fine with me.
Anything you'd like me to?
I'd, I'd like to, maybe if I could ask the board to send any comments to David by email, if there's additional observations, and then we can have a further discussion.
Perfect.
Great. Thanks. All right, setting the agenda for the January 2nd meeting.
So Elizabeth, the only, the only thing I thought we could add for the January 2nd would be a, I mean, I know we have folks that might be interested in serving on the school board, and so have a, I thought about, again, talked to you briefly about this, of school board information, school board, individuals interested in serving on a school board information session, and we could maybe embed that into our January 2nd meeting using some of the VSBA work and just maybe anybody who might be interested in attending could attend, get a little bit of, you know, maybe some Q and A. That was one thought, or we could have a separate, a separate meeting to do that. But we kind of initially thought that it might be good to do this. I'm conscious of all the other things that we have going on after we just talked about budget, but, you know, I'm also trying to be timely around people who might be considering the opportunity to, to be more informed and possibly maybe serve.
And typically petitions are due January 20th or so?
Yeah, usually around then.
And when is the other paper article on school board?
I got that, and I'm sorry, I wanted to share a draft before.
When, when is it to be published?
The 27th of, you know, but I wanted to get it done before the holidays.
So that might be good follow-up. There would have been an other paper article and shortly thereafter. What's the rest of the board think about maybe if, just a 15-minute?
I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I think that if somebody wants to run for the board, they can reach out, and I'm happy to spend time with them. I, I think it's, it's, I mean, I spent, I spent an hour and a half with somebody on Saturday to really give a full flavor of what the board is, and this person's still interested and suggests that, that he's in fact going to run. I won't mention his name at this point, but so, but it took, you know, that long to really explain, and I'm happy to do that if anybody else is watching this and wants to, to sit down, I'm happy to do that, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to do the same, yeah, yeah, I just think, I think 15 minutes in a meeting is, is really very short for, for discussing what goes into being on the board.
And perhaps, yeah, as, perhaps to assess someone's full interest without going through the due diligence of, yeah.
So I think this is a good platform for, you know, letting folks know if they are interested.
Yeah, to reach out to us by email.
Contact current board members.
Yep, contact information is on the, on the website.
Yeah, so for purposes of the public, all individual board members, contact information's on the district website, both emails and phone numbers. So I would welcome any interested parties to contact any or all individual board members and get perspectives. All right.
And we've got to pay attention to the monitoring one that we just moved 2.0.
Okay. All right, Agenda Item 11, Future Agenda Items. Have we taken anything off or do we need to add anything?
Can't take anything off. A moment.
All right, if we're not adding, that's a good place to be. All right, not seeing any additional feedback, we'll move to Agenda Item 12, considering the minutes of meetings of December, or November 28th, December 3rd, the 5th, and the 10th. So looking at those, the 28th was a negotiation session, I believe? No, I'm sorry, that was a regular meeting. Any comments on the minutes? I'm seeing none, those are approved. December 3rd was a executive session meeting. All right, seeing no comments, those are approved. December 10th was a planning session. Seeing no comments, those are approved. Do I have a, do, look here?
December 5th was a negotiation session, so that's why there are two separate ones. There was an executive session in the morning for planning, and then there was an actual negotiation meeting.
Oh, and we have, okay, I was looking for the attendees, so yes, so an actual bargaining session.
I just want to say, there's a tiny thing on all of them, and this isn't, I don't think needs, but administration is spelled incorrectly on them. It's just, it's on all of them, and I don't know if that's just gotten into our template somehow over time.
Yeah, that's good. Goes along with me. Got it, thanks.
So actually, and actually on these minutes, then we have to add a fifth meeting. There were two December, tense, just for accuracy sake.
That one's fine, but yeah.
So the last one is a regular meeting on, did I cover that one? I've got these out of order in my packet here, the 5th, did I cover the regular meeting?
The December 5th meeting, I think she did already.
Okay, oh, then, then we're okay. I think I just got them out of order, sorry. All right, seeing no other comments, those minutes are approved. Were those future corrections?
Yep, got it.
All right, moving on to the Consent Agenda, 13. Do you want to review that, David?
So you do have a hiring, it's just at the end of those meeting minutes. So under the consent agenda, you have some new hires here, special educator at the high school. Again, this was a salaried position, it was already in the budget, and again, you can see the reflective salary, again, special education at the high school, and then Cynthia 1.0, special education at Chamberlain. Again, this is an add to staff based on student needs, and you can see the salary and the budgeted, which is a contingent, contingent teacher. I think that's correct, Amity, that, that's what we, yeah, right. And so I want to be clear here that this is generally an area that we've taken a little bit more time on, this contingency hire. Typically, we've used the contingent, the contingent teacher for the kind of grade levels. This is the first time that we're actually using it for a special education deployment. This would be, I believe, one of the, one of the six, one of the six, right? That was, that's currently in the, in the request, and this is coming to you as a result of student need, but it would lower our number in the budget from six to five. Is that correct?
That keeps that addition, yes.
So this would be, this would actually help them, would provide them that, that level that we're trying to get at based on that DMG report. So that's where we are with those two individuals.
So when you say student need, that this is not an individual IEP, is it?
No, it's not. It's really to support the kind of conditions in that particular, in the school, currently based on caseload management and needs.
And how long has this position been open or identified?
It's been identified, and we've been working to kind of accommodate the students, but it's been difficult. So we are in need of a special educator at Chamberlain currently based on the needs that we're dealing with, yeah.
So can I clarify the, the comment about the reducing from six to five?
Mm-hmm.
This is an incremental FTE based on use of contingency funds in this budget year, correct?
It would be, but we're, again, and then based on, back on the budget, I'm sorry to draw that contrast, that may be more confusing about the budget that we just presented referencing the DMG report. It was to put co-teaching in the elementary level, and there was going to be two at each of the elementary schools, but we've only asked for five because this one would be, if approved, would be within the school already. And mostly, there's a current need to address some of the balance of service in Chamberlain.
This is a, if we're hiring at this point, a new teacher, wouldn't that be a one-year hire or?
Yep, absolutely, one-year only.
Okay.
Yeah, all, both of these would be one-year onlys, and obviously would be prorated, so, yeah, those rules are in play. I don't know, Amity, anything else that, or Gary, that you wanted to add that I'm?
Just as a clarity, so these positions were counted in the FTE count for our current FY19, and also transition to 20 as part of that group of teachers that Joanne wants to add at each elementary. So like David said, instead of it being six, initially it was going to be six, but because this teacher's in Chamberlain and in that count, it made it five.
Right, so let's, let's back up a little further. So if we were to do the continued service budget, this position, we, we included in the continued service, so that may be a little bit ahead of it, ahead of ourselves on the assumptions, so I want to just call that out. If you don't approve this, then we would make that reduction and change in the continued service budget. But again, we, we've got, you know, things are moving here, so I don't, I don't want you to feel like we made, you know, made the definitive decision, and that would have to change, so I want to be transparent about that.
Yeah, I would just be clear that we don't describe this as a savings in FTEs, because it's techni-
Because it wasn't in the FY19 budget.
Nope.
The money, the contingency money was in there, but the FTE was not in there.
That's correct. Yeah, and again, I've been clear that, you know, that the budgeted salary is, we've been clear that it's got at the contingency side.
Yeah.
Making it look worse for this year doesn't make it look better for next year.
Yeah, right. I got you.
And we do not need action on the consent agenda, correct?
I had a question, though. On the, on the bids for, for pizza, which is near and dear to my, my heart. I mean, what was, was that like, are some of our local pizzerias contacted, they just didn't put in a bid like Marcos', Leonardo's?
I honestly can't answer that.
Well, it says on the second paragraph that.
If you look in your.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Six, we invited six people.
Okay, I, I guess I somehow missed that paragraph. Now, they had their chance. Yeah, they, yeah, they had their chance.
Who was, who was, yeah, solicited, yeah.
All right. There we go then. It's a, I won't say about, anything about what my favorite pizza is.
All right, and just, can I clarify on the consent agenda? This is not warned for action, and I feel like I'm having a senior moment. Typically, wouldn't Adam, well, any bids that go out for, or anything goes for bid above the amount of money we talked about in policy, and then new hires would require board approval?
I don't know how we.
I need a refresh.
Yeah, I know, we've gone through this before, and I'm not recalling yet.
Only if we take one of the, if we take them all out. Out of the consent agenda. What we can ask to take, at least the new hires, we can ask to take that out of the consent agenda.
But we don't warn act, we're not, the whole consent agenda isn't warned for action, though.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
I'll have, you'll have to give me.
That's what we've done, I know.
You'll have to give me a remedial on that, David.
I'm having the same moment as you are, I know it's.
Okay, moving on to Agenda 14, AP orders 21 and 22. Any additional questions? All right, Agenda Item 15, we have an AP order to the Howard Center for Human Services in the amount of 105, 105, 282,000. That is warned for action. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, and I can warrant Joanne if she's exercised it out. I will take a motion to go into executive session to discuss labor negotiations with teachers, administrators, and support staff, where premature general public knowledge would place the board at substantial disadvantage.
Bye-bye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move into executive session. Thank you.